Of the city of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four at five thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kulyas.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kuliannis.
Here.
Commissioner Di Donato.
Here.
Okay, uh, this is a special session. We, uh, scheduled this at five thirty, uh, this afternoon. One of the reasons, uh, is that, um, each of the commissioners was able to go through the applicant packet, um, for the city manager, and we needed to get some approval done, um, before too long, so we felt that this was important to do that. Um, it's a just a one item agenda, and it's the approval of city manager applicants list to proceed with in-depth background checks. Um, city manager, of course, I know, you know, you're here, and we've got, uh, Mr. Smith, Ms. Niffen here. I'm gonna turn it over to you.
I'll go ahead and have Mr. Smith and Ms. Niffen get up and just explain the fast version of how we got here, how we got to this list, and, uh, and then the board will take it from there on what they want to do in moving forward.
Jane Niffen, HR Director. Uh, we took the all the applications and went through them with an eye to qualifications and whatever, uh, we thought was important in the job description. Uh, there weren't a lot of factors in the job description, but we also took into consideration, uh, the job announcement and, uh, the wishes of the commission. Uh, so this is just a, what I call a thousand yard overview. It's not a ranking. It was not a ranking. It was just showing you the facts and laid out a few parameters that, uh, were, were important for a city manager. Paul?
So since that list was put together, we, uh, spoke with each of the commissioners, and from there got their input on which candidates they wanted to look at with further detail. And so the list you have in the backup is an alphabetical listing of those candidates that the various commissioners put a yes next to. Um, that's what your list, it's meant to serve as a starting point. Whether some commissioners had some maybes that they want to add to that list, or perhaps you all want to work together to make that a smaller list. As we move forward to the next step, uh, we stand by to assist.
Okay. Is that it between the two of you, or? Okay. Always very brief, and I would hope that this whole process goes that well, so we'll see. Um, I think, um, each of you, each of the commissioners spent time with, uh, Ms. Niffen and, and Mr. Smith, and, and, um, now remember, we've got one hour for this commission meeting. When we adjourned this meeting, um, we've, we're gonna start the other one at six thirty, which is the, uh, public hearing on the budget. Um, I, I don't really have anything. Uh, we're, how many applicants do? How many applicants are on this list that we've, uh, that we have? Ten or eleven?
Yeah, on this list in front of you is nine candidates, external candidates.
Okay, so I hope, uh, there was an email sent out, information was sent out, so I hope each of you have had a chance to look at that. So let me go ahead and go to each of the commissioners, and, uh, we'll start with Vice Mayor, uh, Kulya. Congratulations. This is your first evening as Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I like the list of applicants, uh, the ones that I had that were, uh, in my top selection process are, are in here with, with the rest, so, uh, I feel good, and, um, just waiting to go through the rest of the process. And I was happy to see that we could get it a week earlier, 'cause things can happen and change real quick with some of these candidates, so thank you all.
Okay, Vice Mayor, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Eisner.
That's gonna, yeah, that's gonna happen.
Kind of for just a little bit.
Um, I pretty much, um, had all of the same as what was on the list. Um, some of them I had, um, double check marks to, which were ones that I preferred, and I think there were a couple in there. Uh, I think there was one in there that I did not want, but that was about it, so. Um, I mean, I'm happy to reduce my list down. I could reduce it down to about five people.
Okay. Well, the objective is to be inclusive so that, um, uh, for this evening, and, and, uh, uh, let's get all the commissioners, and we'll go from there. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kuliannis.
No, I'm, I'm happy with the list. Um, I want to thank, uh, Jane and Paul for doing a excellent job of, I, I really like their, their weighting criteria. I thought it was well thought out, and I think it got us a good number of people that, uh, we should do our backgrounds on and see, see who they are. So I'm happy with this list.
Okay, um, Commissioner, uh, Di Donato.
Um, first of all, I just kudos to, to Paul and Jane. I, I think the job y'all did was tremendous. Having gone through this now for a second time, this is even way easier than the first time, so I, I just want to commend staff for the way in which they did it, but, uh, my candidates, I basically had eight, um, six of whom were on the list that we were given from Paul and Jane. Uh, two were not, and I, I just want to recognize Renee Visson and Scott Young for filling out applications as well. I think you're both would be great choices, and you were on my list. So, but I would hope that we narrow it down to four or five. It's up to you guys what you want to do, but that's, that's my preference. And then we go forth with the background checks and set up interviews.
Right. I, I think the idea was to, um, have more rather than fewer at this point. Um, there is, you know, there's some, there's some people on the list that, uh, from my perspective, that, um, you know, I've, I've had conversations, they wouldn't be on my list, but the fact is that, um, in the, uh, as attorney saying, abundance of caution, um, you, you don't want to wind up having too small a list and having a couple of people get kicked off, uh, not for anything really wrong, but just because of something that's seen that doesn't sit well, um, with some of the commissioners, and maybe that changes their mind, and that reduces the number of their, um, uh, ones that they are keen on to, uh, to, uh, those that are, um, uh, that to, to a number that would be fewer. So, um, I'm happy. I wouldn't even mind doing one or two more. Uh, the question I had, though, was on this, uh, not that I've got anybody that I would add myself, but if some commissioner wanted to add another name or two, I don't have an issue with that at this point. Um, the, um, I, I'd, I'd probably not be too good about, um, reducing the number to four or five or say, or at this point. Um, I'd, I'd like just to go through the process. Um, have we, have we gotten that person that's gonna do the?
Well, that, that, that's the thing I was gonna bring up. What, what is the update? What's the update to tonight on where we are with the, uh, with the, with the firm or the people to, to do this search?
We are currently, uh, pursuing, uh, thank you. Uh, we're currently pursuing, uh, the, uh, the background checks through the company that we do use for employees, but we will be asking for a, a, a very much greater list of things to check. Um, I don't have a price list for you yet, but, um, they have been fairly reasonable. Um, I can't give an estimate, but we, we'll update you as we get one. Um, but it's a firm that we've used for probably four or five years.
Well, and I've seen some of the different options and backgrounds and the add-on there. I think it's a, I think it's gonna be a number that certainly these, it, it's a manageable number if you do all these candidates, and again, the idea of, of course, you're not really gonna knock them down until you get this full-in-depth one and then knock down, but to get, even if a couple are added, I don't think, I don't think what the cost is in, uh, being, I think it's gonna be a little less than I was predicting, the seven fifty to a thousand. It looks like with this company and all the add-ons, and we may need to add another add-on. I don't think, I think we're gonna be, be, uh, below or at that. So I think we're good price-wise, especially the money we're saving, but not doing it. We're good price-wise, we're not worrying about cost of these. If one or two are added, definitely we can handle this list. I don't think it's gonna be cost prohibited, so, so don't let, don't let cost do it. I think the, the cost is gonna be fine however we do it. So, so that shouldn't influence if you add one, or if you want to take ones off to get the price down. Price should not be an influence in this. We're gonna be in a, in a good place, um, to handle. And the in-depth background might show you a lot of different things that you need for these, so.
Okay. Um, are there other comments from anyone? So we've got the nine, and, um, do we need to read those off? To have a motion to accept the list that, uh, uh, Ms. Niffen and Mr. Smith are putting forward? You want to read the names? Um, Mr. Smith and Ms. Niffen, could you, uh, read the names of the applicants that we've decided on for the background check, please?
This is the list of nine external candidates for city manager that the Board of Commissioners is directing staff to do further background, uh, research on and bring back, uh, for further consideration. Uh, these names are Eric Bostwick, Joseph Gah, Thomas Hutka, Patrick Jordan, Douglas Maxiner, Scott Moy, Charles Rudd, James Slaton, and Jacob Smith.
Okay, and these were in alphabetical order?
Yes, Mayor.
I just want to be clear about that.
Thank you.
All right. Um, is there any questions to that list? Uh, Commissioner Eisner?
So, um, uh, just, I'm gonna say what is on my mind, and I hope people know. Um, James Slaton is in a run for, he's in the finalist of two different counties right now as a city manager. Um, just to let you know, so I don't know if it pays to, you know, when you have somebody in a finalist, whether you, you, we should go through with that. That's just my only thing.
You're, you're basically, uh, saying because he's on the finalist list, maybe we should take him off our list?
I do, but, I mean, you know, that's not my vote. That's just, you know, that's what.
I don't, I mean, I, I think, you're, Ms. Niffen, go ahead.
Um, as of Friday, uh, we have contacted all of the people, and each and every one of them is still interested, including Mr. Slaton.
Yeah, he may decide to wait and see what happens with, uh, the city.
I always love updates.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, um, I am going to, um, um, ask for a motion in a second to approve the list that Mr. Smith read off of the nine applicants, uh, so that we can pursue the background investigation based on the, the in-depth investigation that, uh, Ms. Niffen, I would suspect would need, feels that we need to have on that, on those applicants. Is that, is that acceptable? Okay, is there a motion in a second?
I just want to clarify, then if we, we do all nine, then we're gonna go later and reduce it down to the number we're gonna interview? Or are we planning on interviewing nine people?
I'm sorry, say it again.
When, once the background checks come, come on these nine people, are we gonna narrow it down to four or five, or are we gonna interview all nine people?
Oh, no, I, I think the, Mr. Smith, go ahead. You're standing there nodding your head. Go ahead. There is a process. Go ahead.
Well, I think the discussion was to narrow it down. Once we do that background check, to revisit all of this and bring it down to a, a list of candidates that's big enough for you to have choices, but not so big that it's a cumbersome process.
Well, just, I, I shouldn't make any difference, I guess, on, on, on time factor, but as Commissioner Eisner has noted, I too know of at least one candidate on this list that is strongly being considered by another municipality in Florida. And the longer we take in this process, the less chance we've got, so.
Yes.
All right.
So my question is, uh, I know we spoke on what our ideal amount of candidates should be. Did you get a consensus, and are you willing to chat about what you felt all of us thought those numbers would be?
Well, that's something we thought that should be a conversation in the sunshine with all, all y'all to decide when these come in, what the next step of doing that was. Um, there's several different ways you could go. You could have a, you know, there's several, a- after we get the in-depth background, and you have all the candidates and all their background, um, there's several different ways you have, you can go before you actually decide on the ones that you got a group of people that you're gonna fly in, keep, bring up, do all that stuff with. Um, and that process would be one you'd decide, and there may be a preliminary thing you want to do to examine the candidates either by Zoom or something else before you bring the final, final list. You could just go with the information you got and come up with a final list. Um, you have to think about, and it's best that you discuss and think about what that's, that when you have these nine and all the information on them, how you want to get to the candidates that you're actually gonna, you know, fly in, set up the two-day process, go through, and do it. Is there another step of, of looking at them that you want to, want to do? Um, so, so that's something this board very much, um, um, is gonna have to decide what their next step is, and maybe talk about a little bit tonight about, about what the different ideas are, and we can research, and they can research, and see what steps you need to take. What is that, what else do you need when all this information comes in, um, to break it out? You may want, you may want staff or son to find videos of them in, in meetings and commission meetings to look at something. There may be other things you might want to w- w- do, um, or you have enough information available to you to get it down to a manageable three, five, or however many candidates you think to come forward and go through the process. Uh, that's something all you need to talk about together and figure out what that, what that next step is when you have all the information.
Okay.
I'm ready.
But let me, let me, uh, let me ask a question before we go further. On these background checks along those lines as far as additional information, are we gonna be given those reports on each individual?
Uh, we do plan on sharing the information with you, yes.
Hmm, okay. Is that gonna be, is that typical of what's done, or?
Uh, different organizations do it differently, um, in the, in, in the view of transparency. Um, as long as we're within the Fair Credit Reporting Act, uh, we're, we're, uh, allowed to share it with you.
Yeah, it is, they are public documents, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
There will have to be information redacted probably from, from some of them.
Hmm, okay. Um, Commissioner Kuliannis, you have your light on.
Yeah. So, I think what we do is we empower, uh, Ms. Niffen and Mr. Smith to get started on this tomorrow morning. Get them, we empower you to make the decision on, uh, how, you know, the, the background checks, whatever the alternatives you think are, uh, you know, how in-depth, I don't know if it's like an à la carte thing. You, you guys do what you need to do. Get started on it first thing tomorrow morning. Then hopefully these things will start, they'll, they'll jump on it right away. Get these background checks. It's Tuesday. We may have background checks on most of these or all these guys by, by Thursday. So then if we do, then you get us all into your office like we did before, either on Friday or Monday, and we use the same process we did to come up with this nine. We, once we see the background checks, we'll probably be able to all, you know, it looks like, you know, we're all pretty reasonable on seeing things pretty similarly, so we may be able to knock this down to four or five people. Then we, they come back on Tuesday to put it on the agenda for Tuesday to come back with a list, and we can jump on this thing, so I think we could do it.
You've got out-of-state, you, even on our own, you've got out-of-state people, and that's, that's, that's two to three weeks at minimum process on out-of-state to get the full.
That, that much?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, even the background check is gonna.
Well, we at least empower them to get started, get this thing cranking as fast as we can, and if we have to have a special session the following Tuesday, uh, we do what we gotta do.
Well, the plan was to get on, and once you decided out of the plan was to get on the first thing in the morning, and get them processed and done as fast as possible, get them all back. It's just the depth of the out-of-state ones is gonna be the, the holdup, 'cause we got some that's gone to several states and stuff, so that's, that's the, that's the holdup, I think.
With, with technology now, they find stuff out, you know, it's not like, we're not going up to those states to, do, well, you're gonna go on the internet, you're gonna do what they do. Uh, the bad things are gonna pop up quick. Um, I think we're gonna be able to do something fairly fast. So at least we can have something by at least, if we can't do it on Tuesday, we have it the following Tuesday, we have a special session. We narrow down our last three or four. We agree that we're gonna interview them and get this thing rolling. So anyways, that's my two bits on it.
Um, I, I hate to rain on your parade, but, um, the city manager mentioned the fact that there are a number of people out of state. Um, that in itself will take some time, even when they're searching databases. But for the depth of the investigation or the, the background check that we are doing, some of those take a, a bit longer. So I'm suggesting that we would be lucky if we get the, the process wrapped up in two or three weeks.
Well, Ms. Niffen, the way this, before, uh, Vice Mayor Kulya, let me go to you. I've got a question for Ms. Niffen, but go ahead.
Sure, I like, um, Commissioner Kuliannis's, um, area. I understand we're gonna have the two, three weeks for the background checks. Um, at some point, we're looking at coming down to four or five candidates, and we just gotta decide when that day's gonna be. But I'm all open for special sessions, uh, anything we need to help, um, keep the process going. So, uh, I'm very open to it.
Okay. Ms. Niffen, um, when we, um, contract or direct the person or agency that, to do this, they're not going to report back to us until they've got all nine completed, is that correct?
Yes. Uh, the other thing that, um, it, it's not a, it's just a, a process that we have to go through is that we have to obtain a release from each and every one of these candidates to conduct that background check. Uh, so that's a legal requirement. So it depends on how fast we can get, we can send out the, the document for them to sign. When they get it back, then we can proceed.
That's, you know, this is, um, going back to, um, uh, our consultant, Slavin and Associates. If y'all recall, there was quite a bit of time that was kind of dead time between him collecting and then whittling it down, and that's what all this was, and he was going through these background checks, kind of, you know, talking to them about, well, what does this exactly mean? And that's when he came back to us with the, the three or four. I'm hoping that we'll have a number, a greater, larger number. Um, I, I think right now, um, we just have to move on with the process, and, and then if we don't see anything back in maybe two weeks or something like, we can inquire about a status report on it, and you can, maybe we can ask you to do that now. Give us a status report in two weeks if we don't, a memorandum would be fine.
Yeah, that's good.
If we don't hear anything, uh, back from the, uh, organization. Um, let's go to, um, Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I have two things. Um, one, I would like to request that there was one resume that came in with a font that I couldn't even read, so I would like to have that, if possible, if they could send out to that person and have that redone. Um, and also the second thing, if the board decides to agree with me, that we should also have all of their requested salaries, 'cause just a few of them put it out there. Um, it would be good to have an idea of if they're out of touch with us, why, you know, this would be a consideration before we bring it down to the three, four, or five, however, however many. Um, you know, some, I did go through all, all of the resumes, and some of them gave, you know, a lot of information, and some of them, you know, one, a cover sheet, you know, I mean, and everything in between. So I'd like to get as much information on the people that we've selected, rather than going back into, you know, just to get as much as we can on their request as well, so we're making an educated decision, that's all.
Okay. Commissioner, Di Donato.
Would it be possible to get the signatures for approval by e-signatures online?
Yes, we, we will, we will definitely scan them to them.
So, so.
And ask them to sign.
We should be talking days to get permission instead of weeks, though.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The only other thing I'd say, Commissioner Eisner, I think, I think that's a good point, 'cause there were several. Uh, even on this form, there was one candidate that chose based on some other parameters, but when asked, asked for the blue column, which is one of the ones I used, they didn't have anything. So if, to me, if, if you're asked to fill it out and you don't provide all the information, then I'll go on to somebody else. I, I'm up to whatever this board wants to do.
I agree with you.
Okay, and, uh, regarding, uh, Commissioner Eisner's point, um, you'll ask for any missing, um, salaries that are not there, okay?
And anything else while we're here tonight, anything else you want to ask of them while we're in the background process? We, you know, we'll, we'll give them anything else the board wants. Um, tell them, you know, they're required to send this to get you, get to you.
Vice Mayor Kulya.
Um, I'm looking at the, the calendar right now, and I really want Commissioner Di Donato to be part of the selection process. You know, I know we have the special election going up, coming on. Uh, how realistic is it that we can make a selection before that?
Before the August twentieth, or the swearing-in?
Yes.
You, you made that point before, and I thought it was a good one, um, that, um, that the person that's gonna be there for the next year and a half should be making the, the final decision on that.
No, no, no. I think Commissioner Di Donato right now.
Should be involved in that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, as of right now, it's June eleventh. If you, uh, go three weeks, it's gonna be, uh, the first week of July. And I would suspect that if we don't have a decision made by August twentieth, uh, we're in big trouble. Um, so I would suspect that, um, we can probably work, assuming three weeks for right now. Uh, let's go ahead and schedule a couple of meetings, um, you know, work with the commissioners maybe in three weeks. Schedule a special session to go over the, uh, the. Schedule a special session to go over the, the investigations or whatever, the background checks. And then also to talk about those things that we, Commissioner Kulianis brought up as far as, or was it somebody, or as far as whether we're gonna be looking for city manager qualification, certification and all those other things that we had requested. Is that, that's what you were talking about, right? That we need to have that conversation at some point?
Well, just if there's anything else you want to ask of, of the group.
No, there was some discussion where I, I can't, I thought it was Commissioner Kulianis. It may have been, maybe Commissioner Eisner. Where we needed to look at the actual qualifications of individuals. They may not satisfy everything that we've got, the ICMA certification and, and, and I, I don't think all nine are ICMA certified.
That was Commissioner DiDonato.
Well, that's, that's- Commissioner DiDonato brought that up.
Yeah, this, yeah, in the beginning, but there are some that aren't ICMA certified. But there, I'm, I chose them anyway. And then there's others that, just under, under license and certifications, training, they don't have anything. So it's-
Yeah, we went-
I didn't include anybody like that.
No, but we went through that with the internal auditor. We had required them to be CIA certified, certified internal auditor. And, and I don't think Mr. Pool was, but we had a requirement that he become city, I'm sorry, CIA certified within a certain amount of time. We could, we could do that as far as any applicant as well. The other problem, well, it's not a problem, it's, 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 I'm sure they're gonna learn more of the city as they go along as well. I just wanna make sure we, right now they've got their brochure.
I think when you compare the licensure and certificates to the, the training and, and what the job titles they've actually had or experience, in other words, I think those, those can balance scales somewhat depending upon how much experience they have. I mean, if they've been a city manager, if they've been an assistant city manager, certainly they, they can get on board. But, and then we can encourage them to get ICMA. I don't, I wouldn't wanna necessarily exclude some of these because if, if they've already had the experience on the jobs, all I'm saying. I, it's up to, again, up to-
So, so why don't we in three weeks have a special session scheduled for whittling it down to X number of candidates? The commission will decide, there may be two, there may be four, there may be six that we want to interview. We'll decide the type of interview at that time, whether we will have it like the last time, they will come forward. Or we would have Zoom like we did with the attorneys. There's, there's a number of ways we could do this to get it down to, I'm not sure, whatever the commission decides. One or two finalists, I don't know. And, and, and have them come forward for an actual in-person interview. I think that might be consistent with you as far as flying people in from out of state.
And I think, and I think the team will talk with each of you along the way while we're going through the background to try to get everything, all the different ideas together. So we have more information when we come in three weeks to that meeting of-
The, I, I think that would also be, give them an opportunity to see the town as well, unless they've already come on their own. The one, one question I, I wanted to bring up, that I've talked to the city manager and we need to kind of roll this in at some point. I don't think last time we did this, and, and I think it was a timing issue, and I think we had wanted to do that, was somehow involve the, and, and I know maybe, and I don't quite remember. Maybe there was some objections to some of the commissioners on this. But I think one of the concerns that you have from some of our city staff is not wanting to upset the apple cart from what we've got right now in terms of a smooth running engine. And, and, and there's quite a concern as far as someone new coming in and not knowing this person is until the first day they show up at, let's say, a staff meeting where the city manager introduces them. And, and then that's when they get to know them. I, I think it's, I think we need to think about a way of having these candidates, I, I, I don't wanna say Q A, but somehow looked over by our city staff to, to see if there's something that may be an issue with them. Or maybe they might have somebody that they could, you know, that they could, I don't know, maybe talk to you individually about, or, I know a lot of you have personal relationships. Maybe there could be a, a, an employee committee that we form to look at this. So let me, let me go to Commissioner Kulianis first and then Commissioner DiDonato, I'll come back to you, go ahead.
We discussed it in my, in my breakout session with Paul and Jane. We discussed the department heads having a chance to meet these candidates as well. And having a, a information sheet, some kind of a, a thing that they could fill out anonymously. They don't need to have their names on them. But that way we can accumulate those and get the opinions of them without, because they're not gonna wanna say something bad about something who ends up being their boss, right? So it could be anonymous. They, you know, it's handed out to all the department heads, they fill it out after meeting. And we set the criteria of what we want them to evaluate of these, of these candidates. So that would be a nice, and then we could get that information to get a sense of how they came across to the department heads. And that would give us something as well.
Okay. Let me go to Commissioner DiDonato.
That's, that's not a bad idea at all. I will say that as, as I, as I remember from when we did this once before, department heads were welcome, you know, as long as their job permitted, for them to attend the interview sessions. They don't, they don't ask questions, but they, they attended. We also had a, a little social that night before the interviews that everybody was welcome to, including the public, where several people from the public came and, and talked to the candidates as well. So whatever this board wants to do, but that, that's what we did in the past.
Okay. I think at that special session, that next special session, we need to make a determination on that process as well. I, again, I don't have any ideas, but I think it's important for, at some level, the staff to be involved, the social, watching the interviews, maybe, I, I don't know. I, I think these are all good ideas that, and I, I'm hoping that Ms. Niffen can come up and city manager with some feedback from the staff as well, as maybe they've got an idea.
And we'll look, Largo I know had a process involved in their process involving the department heads on the thing, St. PB. We'll look at those, cause there've been a lot of recent city managers in Pinellas County going through. And we'll look to talk to you about what their process got. But I know at least Largo had a process where they're, you know, when they're going around in their different interviews and stuff, one of those sets of interviews was, was with a group of staff selecting. So we'll, we'll have all that information for you out there of what some other cities have done in the process and to modify or, you know, to give the department heads, you know, some involved, even just to meet the candidates.
Right, okay. Let's, let's continue. Is there any other business concerning this item that we need to finish up on or you'd like to have some direction on? Anything at all?
They say no.
No, I think, I, I heard the part that I wanted to hear, which is another special session coming up to formalize that next process. I really think you all as a group, that's gonna be the way it's gonna get done.
That's right. We didn't quite finish that. So in, in three weeks plus, plus meaning a, a few days or whatever.
Right.
The special session. And so let's plan on perhaps a week after that to have the final selection or do it that same night. But I would say at least give it one week between that special session where we talk about this criteria, establish the process for the staff. And then one week after that, to give that an opportunity to kind of mature a little bit. Or maybe should it be longer than that, two weeks after that? One week after that?
Yeah, that's right.
Let's plan on one week after that to go ahead and have another meeting to reduce the number to either a finalist or a couple of finalists, is that it?
Yep.
Or, or was it five? We're gonna go from nine?
Whatever y'all choose, you may have two or three top candidates and that would come to, it's whatever.
Why don't we have the special session and then the idea, and if we need another meeting right after that, we can do that. But right now at least two special sessions to finish up this process, how's that? Is that acceptable, everybody?
I, yeah, I just, it seems like we're adding an extra, an extra thing. As I understand it, we're gonna get the background checks on nine people. And then from that nine people, we'll either agree to interview all nine or we'll agree to interview four or five. Well, it, it shouldn't, I don't think, take very much time to do that. In fact, we, we submitted, when we did it before, I think we submitted our top three. We made sure the clerk had that. And then, and we voted right away on it and then the interviews were set up. So, you know, I mean, you can't make, at least I wouldn't wanna make a final decision, I don't think any of us would, without the interviews. So, but I, I wanna get to those interviews, that's all I'm saying. I don't, I don't wanna lose somebody because we took too long to do. I think the easiest is to set up like the budget. A meeting and then a second meeting if necessary. Or we could just, just get the two dates set up. If you can do it in the first one, fine, if not, you've got the next date a week later to continue. So we'll, we'll get two dates set up. If we can do it in one, fine, if for some reason you need extra time, but we'll have the two dates set up for, for whatever comes up.
Okay, Commissioner Kulianis.
I think what we do is we, we follow the same process we've been following. We, you, you go ahead and I, I think the mo, the first motion should be to approve the nine candidates for background checks and empower the, the staff to go ahead and do that. And then secondly, we use the same process we did to get down to these nine. As these background checks come in, you can get us into your office together. Cause it seemed like that worked well, because then you, you get a, a, a survey of, of the commissioners. And then if we're all kind of picking the same three or four people, then it's gonna narrow it down by itself. They'll be able to do it for us, just like they did narrowing it down to these nine. Cause what they did was they kind of, they talked to all of us, got the consensus and came up with this nine. So now when we do this next process, we do the same thing, we just keep meeting with them. And they will then, if it narrows down to like four people-
Just, let me just throw a caution to the wind.
Okay.
I don't think we should be whittling it down by, to anybody in private so that they come back from nine to three based on what we told them behind the scenes. We need to be real careful with the sunshine law now.
I understand that, but they did that to come up with these nine.
No, we didn't eliminate anybody. I said, who do you have? And they came, I had three people, but I could care less whether they had 10 or 12.
They're gonna give us these names, okay? They're gonna give us these background checks. We're gonna, we're gonna evaluate these background checks. Then we're gonna come up with the names of people we want to go forward. We're not necessarily eliminating people because we're just gonna pick the ones that we wanna go forward. If there's a general consensus of these same five, four names keep popping up, they can come back the same way they did here with, okay, we got four names and then we can vote on those names. We, it may, it may take care of itself, rather than having to constantly set up further workshops that slow this process.
I think like the mayor said, your attorney's gonna tell you that's, that's, that's going too far.
Alright.
They gave us, they gave us the list of, they gave us a spreadsheet of the applicants ranked according to some point system that they had. And I went back and I said, okay, well, look, you know, I could, you know, it, it cut off our 60, 55. I don't care, the people that are above that, I'm not so sure about this or that. But I also said, I don't want you eliminate them based on what I'm saying, these are just observations.
Right.
So they came back with nine based on, on what they felt would work in terms of the point system and the qualifications. And that's what we got this evening. I don't, I, I think it's good that everybody said, well, my finalists are on there and stuff. But I don't think that was their objective, is to make everybody up here happy. I, I can tell you, there's a couple of people that I wouldn't have wanted on there, but I could care less at this point. So the, the next round ought to be the background investigations. We have a public meeting to, you could have your private meetings on each of the individual. But we still have to come back with all nine individuals and have a discussion on each and every one to eliminate them as a commission publicly.
Whatever expedits the process.
I, I understand, but it, it's, I understand, I know, but go ahead, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Kulianis.
So Mayor, July 2nd will be three weeks from today. We're looking at a special session to narrow down to whatever our final candidates are between July, the week right after, between July 8th and 12th. Does that look right? City manager.
And again, at, at that meeting the second, maybe you've got that decision to will down and then we're setting up for the, whatever process you do, so.
If, I'd like if, if all the background checks come together at once, then I, I think we should be able to dwindle it down to our final contestants on July 2nd.
I agree. No, I, I, I don't have a disagreement with that. I mean, that, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, I think that night, for example, we would whittle it down to five. We can talk about, okay, let's do a Zoom on these five between now and next week or the next special session. And then we whittle it down to one or two finalists. Then we still have to invite them in. And then also at that July 2nd meeting, I would like to have that process with, you know, memorialized as far as the, the staff goes, how they're gonna be involved in this as well. And, and, and then, so just for me talking right now, so we'll, July 2nd will be the target for the special session. There we can, we can go through, given that we've got the reports back. There we can go through the, the, the nine individuals. Whittle it down to some number that we decide on. And then schedule the next, and then between, and then also agree as far as how the, the staff is gonna be involved in that. At the next commission, and then between that meeting and the next one, have a Zoom. Perhaps Zoom meetings with each one of those five or four or whatever.
We, I, I will do a Zoom, but I prefer we invite them and sit them down and talk to them. That's what we did before, that actually came here.
You want all five to come here or four?
No, I'm, I was ready to pick three, final three.
Well, that's what I'm saying, after we do the five and we, we eliminated, we have the next meeting that basically eliminates it to one or two finalists, then we have the selection.
Why, why don't we just go to the three then? I mean, it just seems like we're adding an extra step.
If that's what the commission, no, if that's what the commission wants, that's fine with me. If we wanna go from nine to three and then interview all three, that's fine with me too. But somewhere along the line, I'd like for the city staff to be involved.
You're right though, we need, we need to establish it, cause we've talked about this three or four times.
Okay, so why don't we do that? Let's see how it goes. Do the July 2nd, schedule another one about a week after that, is that what we're trying?
Like a fi, are we looking at a five o'clock? Because remember, we have a regular meeting that night at five o'clock before the six, and then the 6:30 meeting will just be advertised at conclusion of the, at conclusion of the-
It might have to be a little earlier than that, 4:30 maybe?
4:30.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, if we're talking about going from nine to five.
Everybody available early, 4:30-ish or something like that before the regular meeting to take care of that on the second.
Sure. Is that alright with you?
I'm ready to make my selection tonight. Anything after that, I'm, I'm agreeable.
Pretend for a while.
I'll pretend, okay, whatever you say.
Alright.
I think we understand, I think we understand.
Yeah, Commissioner DiDonato, you're on board with all of that? Okay, so Ms. Jacobs, do we have a motion and a second on the nine to do the?
No.
May I have a motion and a second to do the background investigations on the nine individuals that Ms. Niffen and, and Mr. Smith presented to us this evening?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no further comments, roll call.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kulias?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticaris?
Yes, and then city manager, of course, you don't need a vote on the July 2nd meeting, right? Or anything, okay.
It'd be all set.
Mr. Smith and Ms. Niffen, everything's clear, crystal clear to y'all, right?
Get more information.
We're actually, honestly, we are relying on you. I mean, no matter what we say, if, you know, it's your experience that's, you can listen to us if, if we don't make sense sometimes. It's like the king has no clothes, you need to tell us, you know, hey, you're walking around naked here, so.
I will say, since you opened the door, I think when you get to that final interviewing of your external candidates, you should have more than one and probably more than two. I would think you'd want three, because if one of them or more does not turn out to be what you think, you got some other options.
I, I think we're not short of eagerness here, as you saw this evening, so. Is there anything else from anybody before I adjourn this meeting? Anything else? Okay, meeting adjourned at 6:15. And for information, we'll be reconvening at 6:30 with the public hearing budget. I call to order the, uh, budget public hearings special session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024 at six-thirty PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiris?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kuliya?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuliyanis?
Here.
Commissioner Didanato?
Here.
Okay, the purpose of this meeting, uh, this public hearing, um, actually, it's a, a budget meeting for the public to provide the commission their comments, observations, their wishes, uh, concerning this year's budget. It's a, it's a charter commission, I'm sorry, a charter requirement that was put into place a couple of years ago. And I think it was, uh, something that was badly needed. And so we're here to, uh, listen to hear, to see what the public has to say. Um, we have, I know it's, the weather's not been real good. We've got, um, a couple of people here and we've also got several emails as well for, uh, expressing their observations. City manager, of course, I know we've got you for introductory comments, so go ahead and start that.
Yeah, the main thing I want to do before Ron gives a brief presentation, then we go to the real purpose of the meeting, hearing from the public, is that, that this process of the citizen input for the budget is not just this meeting tonight. We have had Connect Tarpin open, um, for two or three weeks before the meeting to get input. And I must say, I'm disappointed because last year when we did it, we had a lot of input. This time, we only had six responses. Um, but the good news is that you've got from this meeting tonight until the first bub-, public work session of the budget to get your information to the commissioners, what you want to see. That meeting is July 9th. I think their first workshop. Remember, that's a workshop, so that's not where the public speak. But you've got a chance to go on Connect Tarpin, uh, between now and July 9th and put any input you want, um, for the board to consider when they go into their budget work sessions and budget session process. So before you have an opportunity, tonight is an opportunity again with the weather, but that's not your last chance. You've got about a month, um, to get that input to all the B-, Board of Commissioners, uh, on Connect Tarpin, and we get the information. So with that, I'll go to Ron to give the, the brief report that we can see, or if people watch the tape from tonight and then can put the input in, um, I'll have you start, Ron.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron, Hearing Finance Director. And as the mayor was saying, a couple of years ago, the voters approved that city conduct a public hearing before June 30th of each budget cycle. This will be the second budget public hearing. Last year was the first. Uh, it passed when it did at eighty-eight percent. Um, this next slide is more of an informational slide where you can view the latest draft. Trying to tell you where to go for the view, the latest draft of the fiscal year 25 proposed budget, uh, on the city's website. Then down below, there's, as, as the city manager is saying, the short survey that we had on the budget priorities for the city's community engagement set, uh, web, uh, site called Connect Tarpin Springs and the link for that. Uh, as the city manager is saying, I think we started the survey almost a month ago. And I also provided the results of it through June 9th on your day, sir. Um, getting it just more on the, um, on the city charter that where the requirements were put in there. The, the first one, section eight E was to conduct a public hearing at the beginning, beginning of each budget cycle, no later than June 30th. And also section eight I was to review and update every three fiscal years, beginning October 1st, 2023, a citywide strategic plan and how it incorporates with, with the budget. Uh, and the strategic plan consisted of the mission statement, the vision and the core values. And one of the core values was the fiscal accountability, and that's where the budget came into play there. And down on the bottom there, we've highlighted the section of that, uh, fiscal accountability, the strategic plan goal F2, objective one, which was to utilize the strategic plan as a tool to prioritize budgeting, annual and long-range capital expenditures. Just to go over the budget process to date, we've been working on it already for about four months now. Uh, departments entered their budget requests. All the funds have been balanced. Um, the general fund was balanced with no use of unassigned fund balance. That's the unrestricted money reserves in the general fund. Uh, Budget Advisory Committee has met with all the departments. They just completed their last meeting last week. Uh, just a timetable on the budget process, uh, June 11th, tonight, the first, this budget, budget public hearing. The first budget workshop with the board was scheduled for July 9th, the second one for July 30th. And if, if necessary, another one on August 8th. Uh, September 4th is scheduled for the first public hearing approving the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget. And then September 18th, we're scheduled for the second and final public hearing on the millage rate and budget. Uh, just where the budget stands right now, it's early in the process, but just to show you, we've got the budget at about little eighty-five, almost eighty-six million. Uh, the largest revenue source, this is a revenues by type. Uh, the largest revenue is at forty-five per two, point two percent, being charges for services, which is mostly your enterprise funds, your water and sewer, stormwater sanitation, and then taxes at twenty-eight point seven percent. And just a little summary of the expenditures of that eighty-five million, uh, expenditures by type. again is the enterprise funds, like I say, water and sewer sanitation, stormwater. Coming in number two is public safety at twenty-eight point seven percent. And that is my brief presentation. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Let me, let me just say, I'm really, really happy and pleased at the very first part of your presentation. And that's the one thing that I, I get worried about the most, the, where priorities should be coming from for the commission, the strategic plan, the comp plan update. Those were all based with large numbers of community meetings, both positive and ones that didn't work out so well, there was a lot of comments that made just the opposite. But, but that's what we should be using. We should be using a plan rather than devising what priorities are, a commission developing what priorities are each year. Those have already been done in the strategic plan and the comp plan update. So we're going to hear public comments tonight, and then just remember, they also have to be consistent with the strategic plan and the comp plan as well. And I suspect most of the ones I saw in the Connect Tarpon Springs are just that. So let me see if there's any other commissioners that would like to say anything. Okay. Public comment, let me make sure I've got this. Public comments, any public comments? Ms. Taylor?
Katie Taylor, nineteen ninety-one Douglas Lane, Tarpon Springs. Just here to see if the Splash Park is going to be in the budget. So that's why I'm here, to see if the water park is going to be a part of the budget for Dorset Park.
I, I, I think the best way to describe it is we're here to, to listen as far as recommendations go. This is the first cut of the budget. I think that there's a number of projects, capital improvements, that you'll see that funding is requested for those, there's, and then also at the list, that there's a list of capital improvements where funding was requested, but were not funded. And so we're here to take your ideas on board and then discuss those as we go through the process. So your interest is in, in a splash park for the Dorset Park area, is that correct?
Right, uh-huh, and a lot of parents was up there as well, they, they, they all think it's, it's a great idea to have such a facility at the park, because it's a lot of kids go there after, after school, when they get out of the school next door, they go there. So it's, it would be a benefit for the kids.
Besides the splash park, is there anything else that you'd like to?
Splash Park is my main objective right now.
I just want to remind Ms. Taylor, my, my, what I would put in before that, and I've told her and given my timeline, is the, is the reconstruction, possible reconstruction or re-renovating of the concession thing, that is before in my list of priorities, the splash park, but that's just, that's just me. So I just want to remind her that, that my first thing budget-wise, I think the splash park was two or three, but my priority is the renovation of new kitchen facilities and renovation of that building. But again, that's just, that's just me, I just want to remind her, everything is open, and the process of what goes first is open, I just want to remind her, that would be, that would be my recommendation, the first of the Dorset Park improvements.
Yeah, I'm hoping also we'll see some cops and kids, youth center recommendations.
It's going to be at the next meeting, you're going to see the next steps at, at the eighteenth meeting, which is important to tell everybody, Ms. Taylor, they'll be bringing forward what our next step is on the cops and kids center and the general outline of where everything's going to be, which might dictate where the splash park or something, you know, where it's going to be. So that's going to be the eighteenth, to let everybody know.
Okay, because there's a lot of room in the back, near the, in, in, near the back over there for the splash park. My only concern about it going on cops and kids property is that the public kids won't be able to utilize.
No, not, no, I'm talking about the new center.
Oh, yeah, for the new cops and kids center, but yeah, still Dorset Park is still Dorset Park.
But you'll see the whole outline of the whole Dorset Park and the field, and you'll see, there's a good map presentation on that for the eighteenth to look at, and that may be a consideration where we want the parks, though. Make sure everybody comes to that one, because that's an important meeting, the eighteenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Francis?
Thank you. Georgia Anne Francis, fifteen Athens Street. So first, I'd like to address the, the Connect Tarpon. In theory, I think it's a great idea. In practice, it is not so great. The screenshot, I just went to it as we discussed, I thought maybe there'd been a new update, but I did get the email, and I'd like to share this email that everyone's so disappointed that nobody responded to. Two questions on this email. "Please provide your ideas and priorities for the City of Tarpon's fiscal year 2025 budget." That's it. No options, you can't pick and choose, that's it. So I mean, what are we supposed to go off of? We're just residents, okay? Number two, it's even better. "Please tell us your relationship to Tarpon Springs." And in parentheses, these are the options. Resident, business owner, visitor, community organization, et cetera. Property owner is not listed. So somehow, a business owner and visitor and community organization gets, gets listed in these people that have a say in our city's budget? Okay, so, and I submitted my responses, I, but then I went to go edit it, I couldn't go submit it, I didn't even get a response of what I submitted. Usually, when you submit a vote, you get like a response back, or anything you submit, you get your reply. I can't even, I didn't screenshot what I wrote. It, it was submitted before I could, like, I went to go back to edit something, and I must hit the wrong button, it was gone. But I do remember what I said, and it was prioritize, our priority, we need to prioritize our prioritizations, we don't, we have forty projects ongoing. That is insane. That is the problem with the budget. And I will say, is we didn't get to comment on city managers.
Was your comment, prioritize the priorities?
That was my comment.
And that was anonymous, none know who you were.
That was me. And I think that that's the truth, is that that's the biggest problem, is that we've got too many projects going. So, and that's not, you know, a knock on anyone in particular, we addressed this in my P&amp;Z, at our P&amp;Z meeting, and we talked to Renee about it, and I think this should be for every advisory board, is that we should all have a say in what goes on to Connect Tarpon, because that's why it's not useful, is because the people making the questions, well, I don't know who they are, but if the board can make the questions, and then at least, then they can be useful that way. Because I watched the Budget Advisory Board meetings, and they're really, they bring a, like, makes, oh my God, like, I didn't realize what our benefits were. I didn't realize that at all, I didn't know benefits, people got those types of benefits anymore. So again, but of all these people that, and I know Commissioner Kolyanis has raised this before about people wanting to be on boards, especially the Budget Advisory Committee, because people complain a lot about not listening to the Planning and Zoning Board, but the Budget Advisory Committee, like, they don't even, they're like quieter voices that want to quit, and people don't even hear about that. But they ask very good questions in those meetings, but they're just, like, no one listens to their advice or their questions, they have good questions, if they could help create these questions, there's, there are private business owners on there that are very intelligent, that can bring a lot to, you know, our city. So if they can help, if all of our advisory, including the Sustainability Committee, and I think that they would be another great source. If you're going to, like, have any committee take over the Connect Tarpon, it might be them, because what their whole focus is, community outreach and bringing the community together, which is a very difficult thing, you can't really legislate bringing people together. But if they are in charge of at least maybe Connect Tarpon, and maybe some type of, like a go-between between Connect Tarpon and every advisory committee, sorry, I'm doing my time.
Well, no, that's okay, I have a question for you. On the prioritize the priorities, can you just kind of talk about that a little bit? I mean, I saw that, and I under, I think I understood what you were saying, is basically...
So I think, like, as far as the Bay Shore project went, I went through a lot of that, and I tried to figure out what happened there, and I, I still don't know. I think, I think it's an unfortunate situation. I think the city did the best thing, I think even if they had been noticed more in advance, I think the outcome would have been the same. So I really don't know how to fix that, but I do know that I went back and I look, and every month, there's an update on that forty project list that Mr. Robertson puts out.
Right.
And it's extremely hard to follow, and it's like, it goes from like ten percent to a hundred percent to zero percent, it's extremely hard to understand what's going on, and it's too many projects. And I think at one point, Ms. Vincent told our Planning and Zoning Board, and Ms. Kardashian was on the board at the time, that actually the Budget Advisory Committee can work with the planning and zoning to kind of go over, not necessarily capital projects, but to prioritize projects, and that they are allowed to work together. I haven't, I don't know if that, I mean, apparently, you know, Ms. Kardashian.
No, no, I, I understand, I appreciate that, because we don't get a whole lot of feedback concerning that, I mean, we just have a list of projects.
Right.
You know, we, we don't have, as far as their priorities, they are what they are, and, and...
Well, I think the priorities are the Board of Commissioners' priorities, and I think that desensitizes the staff. And so the staff, and I think, you know, you've watched the Charter Committee meetings, I know Commissioner DiDonato does, and a lot of this is like, well, it's a lot of, well, how do we make them do what they say they're going to do? And it just keeps rolling over. So with the election process, I'm kind of for it, if it's laid out longer, because the staff is like, well, why should I work on this project so hard when I know the next two guys coming in are going to be pro this, right? I'm not going to say what that is, but pro whatever these people aren't. So I'm not going to work on this flooding project for the docks, because these people are going to worry about development. And so this goes down the drain, because you need to get that funding in by a certain time, so it goes in the trash, and nothing, it just keeps funneling and just cycling and cycling and cycling, so it's better, I think, to actually have the election process, I guess, broader, so that the staff is more enthused to be committed to a project without being like, oh, well, the new commissioner or the new mayor that comes in is, because I know what he wants, and if he wins, I'm not going to put my staff through all this trouble, because as soon as this guy comes in, he's just going to squash that.
Okay.
So that was just kind of my point, is just trying to, you can't legislate, obviously, your projects, but I think the capital projects, you can.
There is one thought that I have, and that's tying those list of forties to the strategic plan to see where they fit in in the overall priorities. And that automatically, because we do prioritize the things that are important to the residents, like, this is their number one choice, two, three, four, and we can actually take that list of emphasis on priorities and match them to what the forty projects are that you're talking about.
Well, forty's a lot still, but the other thing, yeah, and if I just have just like thirty seconds, was that the strategic plan, comprehensive plan, the sustainability plan, it's a lot of plans for a lot of people to not understand what each of those things are. I'm still having, my dad and I, we still discuss the comprehensive plan, I'm like, it's comprehensive, it just means everything, but it's not that simple. So I think when we reach out to the public, it has to be like more, just simple language, like, how do you, you know, what do you think will best sustain the community, less, you know, how do you want our parks to look if it's a Parks and Rec thing? Not like, this is the Parks and Rec's master plan community workshop, like, that doesn't really engage people, so that was kind of my comments.
No, those are good ideas. I, I think we can make some improvements, that I think, I know we can always make improvements to Connect Tarpon.
And a lot of the applicants that I looked at, about two or three have some in a lot of redevelopment, and somebody had some Parks and Rec experience in there, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Public comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands.
Okay, Ms. Jacobs, we have a couple of emails that came in.
I do. The first one is from Tanya Goldman, nine five eight Bay Shore Drive. "As an impacted resident of Bay Shore Drive faced with expenses and other municipalities have covered, I respectfully request that budgets be set to cover the installation and maintenance of a fully functional sewer system. My household will bear the new cost of water and sewer after all. This should be afforded to all those in a similar situation." The second one is from Lucy Ann Robinson.
Hang on, hang on, is there any, is there any comments from the commission concerning that, or, no, go ahead, Ms. Jacobs, thank you.
The second one is from Lucy Ann Robinson, nine forty-eight Bay Shore Drive. "Thank you for implementing this new way for residents to participate in the budget process. I'm requesting that you include in the budget a commitment to own, install, and maintain the entire low-pressure sewer system on Bay Shore Drive, including those pumps and elements that have been designed to be residents' responsibility. This is not just my harebrained idea, but the recommendation of the EPA on its wastewater technology fact sheet, and I quote page six, 'Generally, it is in the best interest of the municipality, be responsible for maintaining all system components. It is clear that city governments is, that city, it is clear that city government is committed to the sewer type. Fully owning that commitment through complete and adequate funding is the next step. The Water and Sewer Fund, I suppose, is the right glance, but I do not pretend to grasp all its revenue sources. It does seem to fund a good chunk of city government activity from sustainability to program administration. Further guidance from the EPA fact sheet, page five, routine operations and maintenance requirements for STEP and GP systems are minimal. Small systems, three hundred or fewer homes, do not usually require full-time staff. Service can be performed by public works. Note that the Bay Shore project has fewer than a hundred homes. I am confident that once you decide to include this item in this and future budgets, the able finance staff will figure out a way to fund it as an accepted, normal part of city operations. Temporary spot grants won't solve this issue. My thanks." And those are the only two I have.
That's it. And Mr. Rockland, Robert Rockland sent an email in to everybody, his recommendation was streets, roads, and then bicyclist safety, and, and, which I think is consistent with what several of the people had listed in the Connect Tarpon Springs comments. And let's go to Commissioner, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Kulyas, is that you? I mean, right now?
Yes, yes.
That's your light, right?
Well, I think...
I've still got you as Commissioner Kulyas on the light, but I just will make sure the seat was correct.
Perfect. So I think it's important for the public to understand that when these capital improvement projects come for us, there is a list of roads that need to be taken care of, and staff are the ones who drive the priorities for those projects. I mean, when they come in front of us, there may be the top four or five that are going to get addressed for the year, and we may have the ability to pull one out or pull one in, but it's, I don't think this commission has veered off from what some of the plant, the capital improvement projects that have been set these last two, three years. I know there is, when we first got in, we made some changes to the, the comprehensive plan when it come to some building issues, and one thing I know we put a stop to was the gateway entrance sign to the sponge docks, but a, a lot of everything that we've been scheduling has been scheduled by staff, by prioritizing, and our limitations are really about bringing up one project or not, but it, it's very, it's very high up in the priority when we do try to bring up a project. So I just wanted to get that clear and just get that understood for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Commissioner? I had my light on. Pardon me? I had my light on. You did? Yes. Oh, okay, now you're doing. Thank you. So, I'm going to call out Ms. Katie Taylor. Hi, Katie. Katie originally came up and spoke to me about a number of issues that were going on in the city, and my comment to her was, you can't show up for dessert and complain about the appetizer and the main meal. And I want to congratulate you for coming for the appetizer and the main meal, because she's doing exactly what the perfect resident should be doing. Come here, as Ms. Francis says, well, share your opinions. It's unfortunate that there were only, of eighty-eight percent of the people that voted for this referendum, we got only...
we got only six comments. And, you know, I know it was a very bad day today, but I would have loved to hear, I was looking forward to having a full audience of people giving us input on what's important to them so we could make a selection. I always find it difficult to take blame unless, you know, if, if we're not informed of something and when we're left to make the decision and then it was the wrong decision or it wasn't the decision somebody else wants. With that, I agree with Vice Mayor, my pronunciation was, sorry about that. Because there were, as we hear things, is the only time that we're really gonna bring it up to staff. Otherwise, staff has their once-a-week meetings with the city manager and that's how the procedure gets done. And then the list of priorities come to us unless one of us or all of us bring up to the city manager something that, that residents bring up to us. And that's how this whole procedure goes back and forth. And I don't know if changing the questions, as Ms. Francis says, is gonna change. I watched all the charter commission meetings and in the charter commission, they were figuring out ways to get people to join volunteer boards. And, you know, so far I haven't seen anything that really is gonna hold, hold nails. The same thing is with getting people to come here and to give their opinions. How are they gonna get involved? One of the comments the chief made today was that the people that, sorry, it was yesterday, I saw it today. Some of the people that are coming up, some of the younger people are, have a different venue and a different idea than the older folks there. They wanna do their nine to five and they wanna, you know, not have any overtime and things like that. This city takes a full-fledged, it takes a community to run a city. And we need input from the people that, that we, that our residents, our residents should be giving us updates. And I know we all get them, but, you know, he'll get one, I'll get one here, I'll get two or three. But we're not really getting a good cross-section of what's the eighty-eight percent that said they wanna put their two cents into the budget. And I don't know, you can't force, you can't legislate people to force them to come in and say, you must step up to the plate and, and, and make your, your knowledge known. What do you want done? And of course, then you have to explain to them how it falls into the comp plan. So I read these surveys, the responses that were in there. I mean, I could agree two questions are not gonna really, you know, change what we're thinking, but I don't know if five questions would have changed it. I don't know if seven questions would have changed anything of what we're thinking. You know, these are just broad-based, broad-brushed type things. Yeah, I want to see better flooding or I wanna see less flooding or. I do think we need more response from the people. I just don't know how to get it and I don't know if sending out letters. I mean, everybody made a comment that we got that postcard for the comp plan. And I know Vice Mayor was at that comp plan on Saturday and I was at that comp plan on Saturday and he'll sit there and tell you, I don't think we had five people there. And am I correct, there were like four or five people there?
Right.
And I, I just, I, I don't know why, you know, it's like at the end of this, I'm looking at this saying, I, I don't wanna be insulting, but it's like you can't, you can't not show up and not get involved and, and then all of a sudden at the end just go, well, what happened? Nobody told us. Well, you kinda have to get, get somewhat involved and show that you care because, you know, they say nobody is gonna take care of you but you. And if you don't get yourself involved or say what's on your mind, I mean, I don't even mind if, if I'm going to a Forward Pinellas meeting and someone says to me, hey, when you're there, could you speak about this? And this just came about and I just did that. You know, if you're at a so-and-so meeting, could you speak about this? You know, that's what we need. We need more input from the people, from the residents. And I think things would be smoother. And in answer to you, Ms. Francis, I'm happy to walk you through since I think I was voted as the auxiliary liaison, what happened on that. And, you know, there's a lot of misnomers out there just to tell you, so, just to let you know.
Go ahead.
Thank you. That's it, that's what I had to say.
Commissioner Kulyanas? Yeah, I've got some comments, but I'm gonna wait till mine, go ahead.
All right, I'm, I'm not, I didn't plan to comment on Commissioner Eisner's comments, but, you know, sometimes people communicate in these formalities that we set up and sometimes they communicate with us as in the community, right? So when you're at a coffee shop and somebody walks up and says, hey, this is what matters to me. You know, I, I tend to ask people when I meet them what matters to them and I get a sense, and, and that's, you know, before technology, that's how we found out stuff. Not everybody comes here and walks up to that podium and wants to speak in public. But anyways, that's, that wasn't what I wanna talk about. The, I've spoke to Ron Herring about this. What's, what's, what people don't understand it, and I'm not sure I understand it, is when we look at these different expenditure types and, you know, whether it's under transportation, public safety, this and that, whatever these, these parts of the pie are, what I need to know is how much of that is discretionary. So when citizens do tell us they wanna splash park, where, where's that money coming from? And so when, when, and I've actually offered, I'll definitely be popping in your office, is we, you know, how much, I, I would wanna know how much of the budget is set? Payroll, you know, facility maintenance, the stuff we have to spend money on? And what are we actually playing with? You know, what do we have in that budget that's discretionary where we can make a call? And in, like the Vice Mayor said, there's, some of these things are already set and they would go in the non-discretionary column unless we wanna pull them out. But normally they'd be in the non-discretionary because those are in capital improvements that we've already put into, into the process, right? So when we're looking, for example, you know, we're, we're, I'm gonna, I'm jumping ahead to the possibility of buying a piece of property out on Inquote Road, right? And it most likely would have to finance that. And it would be, you know, half a million dollars a year in, 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 in debt service. Where's that coming from? You know? And how much in our budget is the discretionary amount that we know we can, that we actually have some say in what we play with? Because most of this budget is already like locked in. You know, we're not, if we, if we make a overall decision, we're, you know, we're not cutting staff, so that means staff is there. Now, there may be some play in there when it comes to, we've budgeted for a hundred people, but right now we've only got eighty-five employed. We could be, you know, we may have some play there. But I just wanna know how much do we have to play with? How much is discretionary? So when a citizen comes up and said, I wanna splash park, you know, where would we get that, those funds from? And, and sometimes this budget, you know, I, I went to one of the budget meetings, this is just an observational thing. I went to one of the, the budget meetings and Ms. Howard made a comment about, and she was, you know, I, she said something about how we determine spending. Like, you know, in, in government, you know, you come forward and you say, okay, we spent this much last year and we're gonna, we think it's gonna be a three percent increase, therefore we're asking for this much. And she was asking, well, you know, what's that spent on? And, and she actually was like, I hope, you know, that I don't sound stupid. And I said, no, you're not stupid at all. She was, because in, in private business, we do that, right? We, we might start with a clean piece of paper. What do we need? But in government, we don't necessarily do that. In government, it's, it's always a build-on of something we've spent in the past. And I'm not, I'm not making a, a commentary on, on whether that's right or wrong, but what we don't, and, and I don't think even, this is my second time in the budget process. And now I, I just need to get a handle on what do we have? What is discretionary? What do we have? How much funds do we get to actually make decisions on that aren't already locked in? Payrolls locked in, facility costs are locked in. These capital projects that already been approved and working on, they're already locked in. So again, when a citizen comes up and says, hey, I'd like this, do we even have that play? I don't know. And, and that's why I think that when, as we go through this budget process, I'm gonna, I'm gonna work with Director Herring on trying to identify what that discretionary funds are so that we can make decisions about if we're gonna buy a piece of property and there's gonna be a debt service on it, where's it getting paid from? And do we have the funds and what is it, and what are? Because every time we, we make a decision to spend money, it's a priority decision, right? It's, we can do this, but we can't do that. And we don't always know what it is we can't do. We just, you know, we've, and, and we've had, you know, the last couple of boards have, you know, had a, they had big increases in, you know, appraised values of properties, so they got a big increase in the budgets. They also had sixteen million dollars of money that came down from the government. So they had, you know, they had a lot more discretionary things. We don't have that much. I don't, and I, I don't think we do, but I don't know that unless I can have a sense of that. So I'm, I wanna get a sense of that from, from Director Herring on, you know, how much of that is our discretionary money?
Let me.
I, I hope I don't sound, but this is what's going on in my head.
I think there's a simple answer. Mr. Herring, can you put that pie, you've got the pie chart there, right?
It's not that one. Correct.
These are all recurring, I'm sorry, recurring costs? Are there any capital projects mixed, mixed in with this pie?
Yes, there's about fifteen million dollars worth of capital projects of that eighty-five million.
But are those encumbered or are they proposed?
Proposed.
Okay, so those would be brand-new budgets?
Correct.
Okay, that's your discretionary?
Yeah.
And you can go back in, you can, you can, you know, those are things that are based on needs that have been identified or else they wouldn't be there. But that's the discretionary. And, and then the other stuff that is recurring is basically fixed unless you start wanting to cut employees and, and cut into this, you know, or, or crystal ball in terms of insurance cost increases and things of that nature. Those are the hedges, the, the salary increases, increases, adjustments, raises, things are all in there. So I, I think the only way you're gonna do that is to actually sit down with Mr. Herring. I think right now, it's extremely premature other than, you know, it's just coming out of the staff right now.
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying it had to be done today. I think as we move forward and, and go and get to the final process, I think we need to be able to communicate with, with the residents that here's what we have to play with. And we've made these priority decisions. Like you say, some of them are already in this strategic plan, they're in the comp plan. Those are things we, we've had agreed to as part of that.
But it's, it's as I mentioned to Ms. Taylor, I, I can't tell you how many projects are proposed or on the books to be completed, but there's a whole lot that are non-funded that are very close to being just as important. And I think, and, and some of those are ones that have come from residences in a more implied manner and not anything explicit through comments that you taught. But for example, the, the meeting we had last year, would we have thirty or forty people in here because of pickleball courts?
Right.
Well, we were able to implement the pickleball courts. And that's the squeaky wheel gets the oil in that particular case, but that's also consistent with the strategic plan in terms of the, 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 the hometown or whatever you wanna call it, the recreational, the, the feeling for the city. In other words, having a, a feeling for the city of, of recreation, walking and things like that. That's very high in the strategic plan if you, if you look at it. So the, to answer your question is the, the discretionary in this pie chart is about fifteen million dollars. You'll see that in all of our general fund, non-enterprise fund, it's pretty much non-discretionary until we get into the, there are some minor capital like, in the old days, twenty-five years ago, it used to be typewriters. Today, it's computers, so. A new laptop and stuff like that, but that's usually something that has been asked for. I'm gonna let you talk. It's something that's been asked for, for three or four years too, before it actually gets in the budget. Go ahead.
Yeah, all the department heads will tell you that, that, oh, you're getting these, yeah. The city manager's cut it the first two years because they're bound to get in the third year. They're in process for many years getting to that point and it's just, again, by priorities and stuff.
And I know we're gonna get to the point where you go and do your, your, when you go back to all the departments, say, hey, find three percent and, and, and get us, and get us down into a livable spot. I know we haven't got to that point yet. But I'm just, again, as we move through this process, it's important that we be able to identify and, and, and be able to communicate with, with the residents where the discretionary money is. Because like the Vice Mayor said, if we've got all these things locked up, then what are we actually playing with when a citizen says, hey, I wanna splash park?
You remember, but remember last year we came up with forty million dollars or fifty million dollars worth of projects? Remember that?
I know.
And, and you were concerned about borrowing money and not borrowing money and. My point is there is no shortage of things that need to be done in terms of flooding. I'm, I'm not talking about recreational things, I'm just talking about basic things. If, just to give you my thoughts, I'm gonna be gone in, in, in nine months. But I predict in ten or fifteen years, if we don't solve the flooding down at the Sponge Docks, that whole economy down there is gonna be shot because right now we have flooding two or three, four times a month and people are paying good money to rent buildings down there. If that jumps up to a good week or so, then basically they're, they're paying a whole lot of money for, you know, something that they can't actually, can't even predict when they have to be open or closed. And so we need to solve those. Those are high priorities and, and, and a lot of these other things. But on the other hand, a lot of them are enterprise fund-driven too. So that's, that's the whole point. So I agree with you and it's a learning experience and, 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 you know, I, I don't know, you're, you're gonna have to deal with, you know, kind of coming up with, not a coming up, but kind of educating everybody.
And again, it's real important before July ninth that all of you that's got questions like this to sit down with Ron and get all the, so we can really hit the, hit the ball running on the ninth and have all those answered and then get to the hard part of setting that final budget. So Ron is open from now until the first budget, you know, meet with him and.
And the, the one poison pill of every budget for a municipality is recurring cost. When you put a capital project online, like a splash park or anything else like that, there's a recurring cost to maintain that. That automatically jacks up your need for your, your general fund. A lot of people don't make that connection, they need to. And, and so like, for example, the, the four pickleball courts that we put online, we're putting them in. But that doesn't mean they're not gonna cost taxpayers anything once we go forward. There's gonna be a cost to maintaining those as well. I'm talking about cleaning and sweeping and mowing and all that other stuff, so, anyway. Did you have anything else? I wanted to go to some, Commissioner Kulyas, you have anything else? I, I wanted to go to some of the other commissioners that got comments. Okay, let me go back to Vice Mayor Kulyas, you had something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, but from what I remember, our, the first budget we had, there was, there was about six hundred thousand dollars left over for us to, you know, make some decisions. We helped transfer that back to the employees to help get their raises up and their, their wages up. And I believe last year, there was somewhere similar about five, six hundred thousand dollars left over. We ended up hiring a, a few police officers. We made some hiring decisions for the building department and I can't remember what was left with a little bit of the other money, but. But, um, see, I, I know that the capital improvement projects are discretionary, we can move them around, but they're, they are sort of set where the funds are gonna be paid towards those projects. And our margin to make some elaborate changes at all or add something in is really stuck between that. You know, I don't wanna put no numbers this year because I don't know what'll come up here, but it's gonna be somewhere similar to what we had the last two years, you know, four to six hundred thousand, somewhere around there. It's not that much for us to really work with, once Ron gets with the other departments and it really finalizes the budget to, to get everything matched up. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner?
So I wanted to follow up, cause there was a couple of things said. When I first became a commissioner, I asked that exact same question that you just asked, Commissioner Kulianis. And I got back, and this is not to offend Ron, but I got the comment that there really is no discretionary fund. Everything is accounted for. It's when you wanna place something on a wish list, you've gotta take it from someplace else. And that's what I learned. And, and as you get this budget sheet that what normally comes out, we're like borrowing money into year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. You know, I have people that come up to me and will tell me, oh, we can just do that, take that from the penny fund. And I'm like, oh, okay. The penny fund is spoken for for the next four, five years, Ron? Two, okay. But, you know, once you get through all of the known payments that you have to make, and then the other thing is, you know, what I was gonna ask was, we should know how much a splash park is in the first place. That's, you know, that, that would be ground one to find out whether it's even a feasible thing. But there is no discretionary funds that I know of. I, I know that when we need to do a project that comes up and it's serious, I know that our city manager will sit there and turn to Ron and say, to Ron, pull something out of your magic box and, you know, and, and try to find the money for this. And, you know, but it is, it's borrowing from Peter to pay Paul because it's taken priority. That's really what it is. It's not discretionary, it's, it's what's, what's a priority. So that's, that's what I wanted to say. The other thing, I, I also wanted you to know, I do drive around and I get everywhere and I ask everybody their input. I don't even tell them who I am, I ask their input. So I, I do get around as well. I, I just would have liked to see a heavier influx of comments so that we have more things that we strategically could think about. That's mainly what it is. But I agree with you on, on all that you've been saying. The more input we get, the better, you know, the more consensus, the more we can do. So that's pretty much it. I'm sorry, Commissioner DiDonato?
Don't wanna echo what's already been said, but I certainly understand, Mr. Kulianis, what you're saying. And I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Eisner, there's, there's not as much as you think. Most of it, at least in my experience, is, is positions that are budgeted but are not filled. That's one primary area. But I learned something the very, almost first week I was in office back in ninety-one. Anyway, I, I asked about a project that the city had actually purchased land to commit to, uh, expanding the Little League fields, it's Sessler. The city, I think it was eight, eight or twelve years, surprising number of years, they sat on that property and didn't do anything. And when I got into office, I sat down with the city manager at the time, which we all do when we come into office. And he asked me what some of my priorities were, and I, I mentioned the expansion of the Little League fields. And he told me, said, we can't do that, cause it's not in the budget. And he was a hundred percent correct. So I learned right away that if you want something done, you need to get it into the budget. That's the first thing we'd need to do. So if we wanna talk about a splash park, Ms. Taylor, then we need to find a way to get that in the budget or at least plan when we're gonna move it forward. And, and, uh, Mayor, that's, that's where you're coming from. And, and Ms. Franzese, the priority, we do need always to look at our priorities. We need to look at our capital improvement projects and look at that and decide, we may wanna change the order. We need to look at the, the comprehensive plan, we need to look at our strategic plan and do all of that. And as we do that, and, and, Mayor, to your comments, as we use that and prioritize it, it makes it easier to plan ahead to budget. So that's what I'd like to see us to continue to work towards. But we need to dot some i's and cross some t's in some of these areas. And primarily in those three things, the capital improvement projects, the comprehensive plan, and the strategic plan. If we can, maybe we need some workshops on that. I, I don't know how many you've already had on that. But that's where that comes from, primarily. But I, I commend staff, I have all the respect for them. And if, I'm here to say, if you want something, it needs to be budgeted or it's not gonna happen.
The, um, thank you. That's basically, um, let me pick up on that. That, that's what I was saying, Commissioner DiDonato echoes that. And then also, um, up until last year, we spent an awful lot of time on creating the strategic plan and updating the comp plan. And, and I know that there was a little disappointment with the comp plan update, uh, public meeting we had. I'd gotten a call from one of the businessmen and asked me to explain to them what was gonna change to affect him. And my point to him was that, um, the comp plan is basically, the update is a reality check. It's tarped in the way it is right now. And the only thing that, so whatever you own in terms of property, um, it's fine. Where you get out of the priority is when you start asking for a density increase. Not so much that it's needed for the city, but it's needed for you as far as maximizing your profit on it. And I said, I don't know that that's gonna be that easy in the future just because of the way the, um, the comp plan update was written, that we've got sufficient land and, uh, for our, uh, growth of the city and we don't need to, uh, look at density increases to make up any shortfalls for it. He understood that. And getting back to, um, I, I think that, um, uh, one of the reasons why I think that residents, are the majority of residents, the ones I know, the ones that are somewhat quiet individuals, a silent majority, the ones that enjoy their lives, they love their families, they go to churches on Sunday. They're just a quiet group of people. I see them all the time. And they're a lot more at rest right now. They're a lot more peaceful because they've gotten some idea based on what the, the commission has done. And I'm not taking, uh, it's not an issue of credit for me, it's an issue of something that needed to be done because their concern, their biggest concern was they didn't know where the city was heading. I mean, we would see these kind of projects being thrown on the table, like, where's this coming from, this sort of thing? Well, now, when we talk about projects, we can actually tie it in to the strategic plan and give them an idea of, you know, well, you know, this isn't, this is a priority that went through all this discussion and workshops and things. It was facilitated, the comp plan update, the whole thing. So I think that there's a little bit of a quiet attitude right now, that people are somewhat, I'm not gonna say happy, but they seem to be content right now. And, um, and, and I think that we can always get their, their opinion on where they feel that their priorities ought to be. But I, I, I think that, um, um, you know, they've already told us that. And it's in the form of the strategic plan and the comp plan. And I, I think that, um, the, the priorities, I, I agree with Ms. Franzese. And not so much that, the one point that I think was mixed, that those list of forty projects were for the commission's purpose. Cause we kept complaining to him, where's the status on this? We don't see it anywhere. That former commissioners used to tell him that all the time. And so we've created everything on there. It's not necessarily for the residents to, to, we, it, it's, it's a tool for the commission because it's assumed that the commission already knows what that project is about. That's why you see that little information on it. But nevertheless, it ought to be tied to, for us as well, to educate us where it's tied into the strategic plan or the comp plan. And, and whether it's, uh, you know, one of those items up there that, uh, in, in, both of you are right. Commissioner Eisner's right and Commissioner Kulianis is right. It's discretionary and it's not discretionary. It's discretionary as if the commission could reprogram it, the money to do something else. But they, they better understand what the consequences are and what the ramifications are and how that affects the public before we do that. It's not discretionary in the sense that if you don't do anything, that's safe. And then you start looking at future funding and, and looking at it five years down the low road and, and programming funds for that. What was it, I, I, the, um, the, I had a question concerning the Bay Shore sewer. When did that project first begin? Well, it first began in twenty nineteen. That's when it began the, in the funding and planning pipeline, five years ago. This thing that's being built today was planned five years ago. And so, um, you know, that's what I'm getting at.
It's just too bad we can't print our own money like the federal government.
Well, the other thing, uh.
Problem solved.
Oh, no, the, the one thing, I, I, I wanna kind of circle back to some of the emails that we got. Uh, the ones from Mrs. Goldman and, uh, Mrs. Robinson. I, we're, we're kind of like, um, at a disadvantage right now because of the attorneys. We don't have anyone on board. Mr. Salzman's, you know, he's very, very busy. But we need to get an attorney on, there's some, what they're asking for is, is an ex, is an extreme. First of all, I'm not so sure of what they're reading that the MP, EPA suggesting is, is what is, what they have envisioned is what they have envisioned that the EPA is. In other words, the EPA says you should pick up the cost, but I'm not so sure that the EPA is talking about single resident grinder pumps. And, and then there's also some nuances such as easements and a whole lot of other things and liabilities and other things that go along with that. That I think that as soon as we get an attorney on board, maybe he could create or she can create a point paper just to go through that and do a little bit of focus to provide that for him as well. I don't, I can't do that. I know, uh, Commissioner Eisner, you've been busy trying to help that, but I think that's out of the expertise.
Well, I could just tell you this, um, I have not heard where a city can go on to private property to service somebody's private property.
They can't, but, but they can if there's an easement that's provided, which then you give up your.
Right, exactly.
You can't do anything in your easement. And that's the nuance that I think everybody needs to understand. I think what EPA is talking about is like, uh, a, a Mindy, mini, uh, lift station that's installed at a business that, like a marina, for example. I know one mar, I know a couple of marinas, they have their own lift stations. They have, they wash boats, they've got two hundred boats installs. There's all kinds of activity going on there. They need a lift station that where all that water goes into, and then that lift station is pumped into the city sewer. That is, they maintain that. And there's been other instances where subdivision development, such as, uh, Inklod Isles, had to build a lift station to get their project approved. And we wound up taking over the, taking over the maintenance of that. But that was in public right away. But they actually build it. And so there's a whole lot of nuances to what you read that isn't explained and it's simply not translates one for one. Anyway, that's what I wanted to say about those two. So we, we need to kind of think about that when we get, um, another attorney on board. Commissioner Kulianis, you've got your light on.
On the Bay Shore thing, I, I, you know, I think we, it, it's, this is a perfect example of citizen, you know, citizens make, expressing their concern. They came to City Hall, they had their issues, we heard them. And, you know, we're going to do everything we can to try to, uh, address the issue the best we can. Uh, like you say, those, those things were, a lot of these things were decided by boards before any of us were on, up here on this dais. So, um, and I think that we've done, I, I think we've done a great job of, of, uh, listening to them and trying to do the best we can going forward to figure out the best solutions we can. Again, we always have to be careful of, and that's why it's gonna be important when we get our city attorney, is we can't make unilateral decisions of one street that doesn't impact other decisions cause we have to be consistent. We can't, you know, do something for that uniquely for one street in, in, in the town that we can't afford to everybody else when those issues come up throughout the town. But, uh, you know, I was, I was reading, uh, and I'm glad that we found who the anonymous author of this was. You know, when talked about reprioritizing, was, we need to prioritize prioritization.
That's Ms. Franzese.
Yeah, I know it was her, she said it. But, um, when I first read it, I was laughing, I thought maybe, you know, the person just repeated the same word by accident. But, um, there's actually some strange brilliance to that because I think that is what our job is in the budgetary process, right? Is we're constantly reprioritizing our priorities. They're gonna, you know, we're gonna do it again this year, we're gonna put all the stuff we have to spend. Now, there's gonna be stuff that, uh, cause we have, we have our hands tied a little bit when, when it comes to ARPA funds, right? That we have to have those spent by a certain date. So there's certain things that are gonna make us have to move on, on stuff. But, um, but again, going back to my discretionary thing, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Is what she wrote here, is we're gonna have to identify, and then again, the citizens know. So when we have to say, if we do end up saying no to a splash park this year, is we can illustrate why we can't address that this year, but it could be something that like, uh, Commissioner DiDonato says, it could go on to a subsequent, uh, budget. But again, the, the better that we illustrate this to the public, they understand that we're dealing with choices we, uh, like commissioners that we can't print money, we have to live within us, our, the dollars that we have available to us. And, um, again, prioritizing the prioritization is the whole concept that we're doing up here. So anyways.
I wanna request, um, uh, now that I'm thinking about it, I, I wanna request, uh, I don't know how you wanna do it, either a separate agenda item, but it's gonna take some time or a separate meeting on, we, we talked about it, not just you and me, but we've talked about it as a commission. And your comment was, we better do it soon. And that's that Sponge Docks, uh, the corner of Athens and Dotica East. That's four point something million that we've got tied up with this project. And we haven't, we, we, we've got that cost estimate on it, right?
Yes, one more thing imminent. And again, hopefully it's within a month to get that on. Yes, that, that's gotta come on the agenda, we gotta make a decision on that, we're just waiting for one, one thing. And then that's coming on the next agenda, cause again, that's a big.
That's a big chunk of money. And, and honestly, that's one intersection, four point something million dollars. And I happen to tell you, I was an engineer. I mean, we have our engineers do the best we can, but they don't, um, they're, they're not underwriters. You know, they're not, um, um, the oracles at Delphi. They can't predict whether that thing's gonna work one percent. And, and again, as I, I mentioned to you before, we need to make, we need to have a clear definition of what our objective is. If it's to prevent flooding down there, um, during a rainfall, it's, it's not needed. If we have, if we have a, just in general, if we have an objective to prevent flooding during a hurricane, when the water is above our, a major storm, where the water's above the seawall, this isn't gonna help. The only situation this is gonna help is when we have that perfect situation where there's raining and the tide is high to block, hydraulically prevent water from the street of draining into the, uh, into the, uh, into the river. This thing will be a, a check valve and basically all the water will be pumped out over the top of the seawall, or figuratively speaking. That's what we're buying with this thing, just that, just so you'll understand. So the concern is, I understand it, I'm pretty sure you all understand it. But if the residents that are down there that were putting this bulletproof project in there don't understand it, there's gonna be a lot of issues that are gonna have to be addressed as far as spending four point something million dollars just to take care of this one situation that's down there. And, um, and again, my suspicion is, unless we do something a little more aggressive in ten or fifteen years to address that seawall issue where it's coming over the seawall, it's not gonna really matter whether that thing's down there or not. So anyway, we need to have something to, to have that just broad experience and maybe have the, um, and maybe have the, um, consultant in here that, that, that has designed it. Was it, was it still the, um, the guys from the Dutch company? Or was it our own guy? Remember, we, uh, no, no. We had our own guys do that, okay? I mean, our own consultant, uh, engineers, okay?
Believe me, that's a priority. Get on the agenda for you to make, for us to make a decision on.
Vice Mayor Kulias?
No comment. No, no comment.
You, you have us switched again.
Hasn't been, okay, do you have a comment?
I do, but I'm not him. But, okay. Um, I just want, I wanted to follow up. I got a call from another one of my neighbors who actually has a grinder pump and, uh, but he didn't call me about that. He called me about something else. And I happened to just ask him what he, uh, what he's run into because he's living there probably about six to eight months longer than I am. So he said that he did have a failure similar to mine, three years, when he first had it put in, which just proved that the builder put in an inferior pump. And he hasn't had any problems since then with the grinder pump that he put in. And I said, "You know, I really wanna thank you for letting me know that because I'll share that with the board." You know, um, like I said, these things, they, they work. You know, we just had a bad representation on how this was gonna go down. Um, I also spoke with a couple of plumbers. And, you know, i- if you're taking an evaluation of one house on the block and not the entire neighborhood, it's very easy to sit there and say, "Oh, yeah, you know, gravity would work here for your house." It would.
Yeah.
But it would be sent to somebody else's house, and he's not saying that part. So that's the part that, you know, you have to understand. You, you know, you just can't have, um, you know, gravity and, and low pressure in the same place. I've also been to some people's homes on the street where they do realize now that it's been explained that there's no way possible that they could even get...
Gravity.
Their gravity because their house is so much lower than the street. They would have to have a gravity, you know, a, uh, low pressure pump, grinder pump, to send it upstream, up to the street. So, you know, I think in answer to what Ms. Franzese said, um, a lot of the people do know, um, they're more so now at the, uh, at the crossroads of just trying to get some of the money paid rather than fighting the system. Because they all mostly realize it's, it's the best system that you could have in a low-lying area. So that's just my input.
Okay. Are there any other comments in general from any of the commissioners? Uh, city manager, of course, you got anything to close this up? Mr. Herring, maybe, or?
No, again, we'll be, we'll, we'll hopefully, um, get some more comments in, um, to have for you, public comments from this. And we'll look at this about making some changes at Connect Tarpon. We'll look at getting it out different.
You'll, you'll take the change, recommendations.
Yeah, we'll take the recommendations. The thing is, we did the exact same thing last year. And if you remember, when we came to the board, we had those split, we had a whole pay, we had thirty-something responses. I don't know what the difference is from this year.
Well, there, I think people are more content, but I think we can stimulate, you know, their interest a little bit.
We got, we got time to bring before you, to have that information for you, get it out more, the changes that's been suggested. Um, again, we just wanted to give them an oppo, we don't wanna ask a lot of questions. We wanted to give them an opportunity. Say what you would've said here at the meeting. If you can't make the meeting, let the commission know. So we'll work on that for there. And again, any of you meet with Ron for your questions so we can hit the ball running on July ninth. Uh, uh, everybody, he's, he's willing this next month to meet with you at any time, each of you. So set the appointment with him and, uh, get whatever background you need.
Let me ask, uh, Ron, I have one question for you if you can help me. Uh, getting back to this Athens and Dotacan East, what percentage of that money is, uh, is, is ARPA fund money? Uh, do you, offhand, do you know, or?
None.
For the, uh, for the Sponge Docks pumping station?
None, right?
Well, well, we used, it's in the penny fund, right? There, there's no money in the ARPA fund right now since it was going out to... We're not concerned about that.
No, because we took that out just for this very reason.
We were concerned about the timeline, getting it done with the ARPA rules and getting it spent. That, that, I feel a little better about that. We switched it with the penny fund. Any other questions? Meeting adjourned at seven forty-one. Thank you, everybody.